Meeting to order. We all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, everyone's received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any proposed changes or amendments to the agenda? Right, if there's no proposed amendments or changes, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right, move second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And first, after we have public comments, looks like we do have one public comment. Megan? Megan, I have to read my
Okay.
Very succinct note for you here.
Okay.
Public comment is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public to align with the public meetings act. The board will not respond to statements, questions, or challenges made during the public comment period, and there will be no back and forth dialogue. Please know that the board's silence is neutral and signifies that we are listening thoughtfully.
Okay, um, first thing I want to say is thank you to the Mountain View Parent Volunteer Committee because I asked them for a thousand dollars for books for the library and they said yes, so um, that's really awesome thing for Mountain View. I'm very excited about that. Um, so uh, we have a very supportive parent group. I was there at the meeting. I said I will step out and not vote, but they have said no. We have, they had no questions. I mean, I had given them some data. They had no questions, no like qualms at all. They knew it was like the best thing for the kids, so it was awesome. Uh, it is Classified Staff Appreciation Week, so I wanted to highlight a couple more staff members from Mountain View. I did that at the last meeting, but I've got a couple more. So first is a para, Angelica Lopez. She is very respected, looked up to by other paras, a great leader and a kind educator. She's been working there for a while and so she's kind of, um, kind of like our fairy grandmother, um, or godmother, um, para, right? She works very hard to make staff and students feel supported and seen. She's a very hard worker. And after a long, long Tuesdays and Thursdays, she stays and does math booths, so she stays for a couple extra hours. And some of those times we have like our PVC meeting, she's a parent of a student at her school. So last Thursday she was there from seven to seven, I think, at the school. Uh, she's so awesome. She, um, is, yeah, the first one to the, into the school, last one out the door. A lot of times she's amazing. We're very lucky to have her and hopefully she stays forever. Um, next is our parent liaison, Suleika Martinez. If you've ever gone into the opposite Mountain View, you'll know she's like a ray of sunshine. She's so bouncy and wonderful and positive and a great smile. Um, she's outgoing. She makes parents feel welcome, approachable, and she always has a kind word or a shoulder to cry on for our students. Uh, she's very understanding, empathetic, and no nonsense. So sometimes she's gotta tell a kid, no, you can't have another ice pack. It's time to go back to class. Uh, but she does it in a very nice, happy way. Uh, she is funny and kind-hearted and she's definitely the life of all of our staff parties. She's so fun. She works very hard to organize our Student of the Month program and support the teachers and staff and help the parents navigate Mountain View. And now I'm gonna switch gears. Last week we had their last, at the last meeting, there were some public, public comments about the policy thirty-one twenty-two P. So took a look at it and wanted to add to the discussion. I just wanna say I support the policy. I can understand why it makes some parents uneasy, but I can see a practical and positive aspect to the policy. I've worked as an educator and as everybody in this room that has worked as an educator can attest, sometimes we have some very difficult situations with our students. Some of our students have some very hard home lives, um, and they sometimes encounter horrific abuse perpetrated by family members. Missing school for a counselor or doctor's appointment and then being able to write their own excuse doesn't seem like a huge issue in general. And if people who oppose it can think outside of their own families and think about some of those students that encounter some of those very terrible situations, um, they might, might see the need for not having to run your doctor's appointment by a family member that might not be supportive of you having that doctor's appointment in the first place. And the real, the, the reality of situation is some of those doctor's appointments might be as a result of abuse perpetrated by family members and it's a terrible thing to ask a kid to run that by their family or ask the school to call their family for that to, to happen. So I would just urge the board to keep the policy in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you so much. All right, next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Uh, includes routine matters, uh, can be approved in one motion. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda before we? Or excuse me, motion to accept consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
And a second?
I sign out.
All right, all in favor say aye.
I have questions about it first. Sorry. Forget it. On the, uh, AP report, there is an entry on page, uh, I have already twenty-one. Um, page twenty-one, there was a little over sixteen thousand dollars for Walooop School District. Looking for info on what that is for.
Page twenty-one?
We need to speak to that.
Let me turn you down, Tia. Please, very loudly.
Yeah, Tia, you're, the floor is yours. Literally, I just kinda took it.
So we had, um, a check that was uncashed by Walooop School District, um, that was issued back in January of twenty-twenty-four for a payment for special ed services. We were, um, paying Walooop School District to provide to one of our students. Um, it was uncashed. We reached out and they had us reissue. So it was a wash from a check that we issued back in twenty-twenty-four for sped services that we're no longer, um, contracting for, but we were at the time, back in January of twenty-four.
Which, yep.
And I was curious, those two, um, it mentioned Habitat for Humanity. They had seven, uh, payroll accruals. What does that mean?
That also was a void reissue. Um, we had, um, I, I'm not exactly sure what it's called, but I, when, um, a member of the QEA or our certificated union chooses not to pay dues, their dues go, can go to a, um, a nonprofit of their choice and, um, we had a few that were having their dues go to Habitat for Humanity and we found that they were uncashed. They had like seven of them uncapped or un, and, um, they weren't cashed. So we reached out and got them to, um, sign lost check affidavits and we reissued those. So there again, it was a wash, but it was from a previous year.
So that's what the reissue for payroll warrants means?
Yeah.
Okay, further on. And I just wanted to ask our printing, or, uh, yeah, it was a copy machine, twenty-six thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Seriously?
Well, that's, that is definitely on the low end. Propellers are unbelievable, um, really expensive, so.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, you, you read that right.
And I hoping that we can discuss this Power School a, a little bit because I do not understand that's on the agenda.
Yeah, what, what, it is a contract with Power School and Power School, they run all of our online application portal. So for all, anybody that applies to Quincy School District, that's the application that they apply to. And one of the benefit to, uh, Power Schools in that application is almost every district in our region uses it. So once they start an application, they can easily transfer it. So, um, that's what we use for all of our, our online hiring.
And Beltran? Principal Beltran? I'm not, I guess I've never met that, that person. Well, first off, they said principal and then they said superintendent. Uh, and Noveline or Noveline?
Is that still on the?
Is that in, is that in?
Well, that was the other signature on that contract.
The customer contacts list, whoever.
Yes.
They're working with that power.
Correct. And then once Quincy School District, I'll sign it once the board approves it tonight. So that's the, that's the service rep that we're working with.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good.
Well, it's kind of confusing what they call it. They call her the superintendent because that was supposed to be from.
They're, on across the top.
It's prepared by.
It's prepared by.
Contact, so that's the person, that's the principal for who that working with.
And then.
And then down here, and she signed it, he signed it, and this is where.
And then the, the title she.
Got her title superintendent.
Where's that?
Oh, Nobley Beltran, I see.
Title superintendent.
Nobley Beltran.
Oh, I see that, that's, that is, that, that should be.
Should go up there.
That should.
Wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think.
I don't understand where did that come from.
That was a formatting issue, yep.
I'm guessing they send out similar contracts to other school districts and invite a battery over and a mistake.
That is good touch. We will have them clean that up.
Yeah. All right, any other questions on the consent agenda?
Don't.
Not direction. If there are any other questions, then all in favor of adopting the consent agenda?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. And we're on to reports. Ancient Knights, Mrs. Gray.
Would you guys, you're probably to take notes, see no highlighting.
Did you get the new copy?
Um, no, that one is actually though in my building. So if you wanna check out one twenty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And you'll give us the tours later.
Yeah, tours later. I also heard the great news that, um, I'm really one of very few reports tonight, so they told me, you know, take as much time as I need.
She's prepared to dance?
I, no, 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 no. I should have had the music teacher come though. But all right, well, thank you for this opportunity to present to the board the awesome things that are going on at Ancient Lakes Elementary. Um, I'm Whitney Gray. I'm the principal here. Um, and this is my awesome school in the cafeteria and about so. Um, to start with, I just wanted to reiterate the really important things about Ancient Lakes, what we really believe in here. Um, we believe that students have unique strengths and assets that they bring to our community and that we really wanna create a school space where those strengths are celebrated and that students know they belong. Um, and we believe that every student can succeed and become something that they are excited about, um, and achieve their goals. So that is kind of our Ancient Lakes overview. Um, we also are working like every school on a SIP plan. We have three major SIP goals. Um, the first SIP goal is around attendance. And I will say that this goal is, um, what I would call either gutsy goal or lofty goal. This is a challenging goal to reach. We, um, aimed to improve our attendance rate from sixty percent of students attending at least ninety percent of the school days to seventy percent of the students attending at least ninety percent of the school days. Um, and we, we noticed last year when we were doing our needs assessment that our, our students with special needs, um, only had a fifty percent attendance rate. Um, so that was kind of the target group that we decided we would focus on, um, for helping to improve the school. Um, currently, we are overall sitting at sixty percent. So kind of where we were last year, but I have some really cool things that have come out of our focus work on that. Um, our fifth grade is currently at seventy-one percent, which is really awesome. If you know fifth graders, they don't necessarily love school. They probably like a good excuse to not come. Our fifth graders are coming to school and they're coming to school regularly. Our sped is also sitting at sixty-six point nine percent right now, which is almost a seventeen percent of improvement. And granted, we're going till the end of the year, but really we're seeing some huge growth in that area as well. So those are some exciting numbers. Um, uh, some of the things that we thought as our team worked to, like, how are we gonna impact attendance? And the big idea was we need to make school the place that students want to be. So how do we make Ancient Lakes a place that kids want to come to and they look forward to being at? Um, we worked on refining our PBIS, um, Positive Behavior Interventions. We worked on making some tier-one supports that students could get excited about. Um, one of our major shifts, uh, is in our community experience, which we have monthly. And these things are, uh, just fun events that kids get to do at school, not just with their classroom, but a larger group. Uh, last year, we did this where they had to earn, uh, Quincy Gold to purchase the experience. Um, and last April, we did an experience where kids got to plant a seed in a milk carton, really simple. Get some soil, put a seed in there, you know? The kids were so excited about it. And, um, one of our teachers said, is actually the instructional coach, she said, you know, we need to really think about changing this to be something everyone gets unconditionally. You don't have to buy it. So we took that to our PBIS team and, um, they all agreed that, that would be great. That would be a great way to show kids like you belong here. This is part of your community. So we started out this year, everyone gets to go, um. I, we have the seed planting one coming up in April. We've had a glow stick dance party. We've had, um, a really exciting bead thing that I did in the cafeteria and it was like way too many kids at once, but next year we'll adjust a little bit. They all got to, to make very cool creations. If you know any Ancient Lakes students, especially third, fourth, and fifth, you could talk to them about that. Um, and then we also revamped our, um, gold bars, which are a way for students to earn as a class. Um, we revamped the pyramid that they work up to try to get more and more gold bars as a class. And our fifth graders again have really, really taken ownership of this. They are plowing through the rewards. So they're, they're trying every day in their assemblies to be perfect. They're, they're working on attendance to get their gold bars and they're almost finished with our chart and we were hoping it would take them till June and they're like almost done. So so we're very excited about what are, what these little changes have done to just the community and students being excited about the rewards here and the ways to be a part of our community. So that gold bar thing is gonna culminate with a mini field trip going to Lomichuacano, which is very close to us. So that's kind of nice. We just walk over there and our PVC is gonna donate ice cream for the students. So they're very excited about that. Um, on another level, we worked with our MTSS team and our school psych, um, special ed department, really helping to solidify our tier-two supports for like tracking behavior. When we noticed students having behavior concerns, we've really refined how we use those tracking behaviors to, to get data and really support the kids that need additional beyond what the tier-one has. So our MTSS team, we've all noticed a lot of improvement in that area and just, um, really solid way and strategies to help our students. So do you guys have any questions about SIP goal one? Oh, and I'll do the staff recognition, but that little section, do you have any questions?
Was there any specific reason that stood out as far as all of your absences?
Um, you know, it, it's interesting because you would think that, that sixty percent is pretty common. Like, it doesn't sound right, but it is pretty like steady across all elementaries and, um, even statewide. I think if I'm not misspeaking, but, um, it's, it's hard. A lot of kids, a lot of parents don't understand what happens when you miss a day. You know, missing one day, it's like, oh, it's not that big a deal. But if you are right at grade level or, you know, kind of a strategic student who's not quite there yet, but you're getting there and you miss one day, you come back and you're like, wait, they were doing something a little different than what I remember. And then if you accumulate that, so it's just communicating with parents, really getting our community to buy in that school is really essential, not just, not just something you can hit or miss, you know? So I, I don't, I don't know why. I know that it's common and it's just a work of like getting students and parents to be about it. So.
And those numbers cumulative? It's like they count for half a day? Does it count?
Uh, it's a half a day, I believe counts as an absence. I think it's up to two hours that wouldn't be in full absence yet. I could be wrong on that, but that's my understanding of it. So students who are chronically tardy, it's kind of a separate issue from the absence. All right. So again, I'm really highlighting my fifth grade, but they have just really impressed me this year. Um, early in the year, I had a fifth grade class email me, one of the students saying, uh, we have an idea, Mrs. Gray, can we do a staff of the month like how you do student of the month? And I was like, okay, so there's gonna be some more work for me. I was like, sure, tell me more. Um, the teacher's like, no, 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 they, they have a plan, like they wanna do this. I was like, okay, let's try it out, like, let's go. So they started off our fifth grade, one of the fifth grade classes would give up their lunch recess time to sit in the, we have a little pot area. And they sat out there with signs saying staff of the month nominations and they made these little forms and students would come by and write who they were nominating, why, and turn them into these kids. And the very first month they collected, I mean, they had tons of nominations. They went through them and they were very intentional about, we're gonna find a staff member where the kids are nominating them for a really good reason, not just because they're nice. And so these kids went through and they got their nominations and they presented, um, themselves at the Student of the Month Assembly. They got up there, told about the process, they presented to the staff and they've been doing it every month. And it is really, really cool. I, I'm just real, I'm thankful for my fifth grade teachers that support that because they do have to facilitate. Um, and, but the fifth graders really have taken on some leadership and ownership of being the, the ones of the building that know what's going on. So it's, it's very cool. And these were two of our first, uh, actually, I think this was October, so staff of the month, so. Any questions about staff of the month? All right. SIP goal number two, um, is around math and I really, really like math. It's one of my favorite things about being an educator is teaching math. Um, our math goal focused on our multilingual learners and it's also again a gutsy goal. Um, we didn't go off of student growth, we went off of proficiency, which is a little more challenging, but they do go hand in hand. So, um, our goal is to get forty percent of our students proficient according to STAR in the math area. Um, we are sitting right now at, let me see what I wrote, sorry. Um, say, it, that is not right. Oh, sorry, I don't have the right now. Right now, we are at twenty-five, or twenty-seven percent for benchmark and beyond, which is like two percent more than where we started this fall. But the really cool thing is our strategic student group. That's the students that are just below benchmark. Um, that's went up eight percent. So we are noticing that we're seeing students move from our intensive group up to strategic. And so we are talking about how are we really gonna support those yellow students? Sometimes we call them yellow students, students who are performing at strategic level to get to benchmark. Um, one of the strategies that we focused on this year is number talks. Um, at the beginning of this year, I would say we had two teachers that were even familiar with what a number talk was and how you implement it. At this point, we have, um, all of our teachers have tried a number talk. Um, all but two are using them regularly in the classroom and our goal is two times a week minimum. And those two are coming along. We have nine teachers working on a book study right now to help learn how to implement number talks. And number talks are all about getting students talking about math and using math vocabulary in an authentic way to describe what they're learning and thinking. Um, you don't get to use paper and pencil. You have to use your brain, um, and mental math. And then you have to use your words to describe to the teacher how to do the problem that is being featured for the number talk. We have had students, um, when we really started hitting this hard in October, my counselor mentioned to me, I keep pulling students in and I always ask them, what is, what's your favorite thing about your school day? She's like, they're all starting to say number talks. And I was like, awesome! That is so good. And then we have teachers saying, yeah, if I forget the number talk, the kids are telling me, don't forget the number talk. Um, so so it's a really, we've seen a lot of growth in just the student involvement and understanding of what math is. It's more than just paper and pencil solving problems. Um, there's a lot of language and, um, thinking involved. So it's been very good. And then that's a nice little picture of our Math is Cool team. We had thirty-four students in fourth and fifth grade that were doing Math is Cool every day, not every day, twice a week after school. And then, um, they went to the competition and there they are. So, um, another thing I wanna highlight is although we're not focusing on growth for our SIP goal, we're always focusing on growth. Sixty-one percent of our students had typical or high growth from the fall to the winter, STAR. So.
From what?
From fall to winter, sixty-one percent of our students had, um, typical or high growth. So that's, that's an improvement from last year. So any questions about math or number talks or discourse? All right. And then for our ELA SIP goal, again, we focused on proficiency. Um, we started with twenty-nine percent of all students proficient. Um, and our goal is to get to forty-five. We're currently at thirty-one percent of students. And then a very interesting fact is that our strategic, we're at twenty percent strategic. So if we were to get those strategic students up to benchmark, we'd have fifty-one percent. So we, we, we're not like on track of getting half there, but we are on track with having a lot of movement into the strategic category. So, um, our focus right now for our ELA is also language. But looking at really deeply at what is stopping students on the STAR from progressing to grade level. And so we are using some of the STAR instructional planning reports. They have reports you can look at, um, that say like this group of students really struggled when it got to this standard. Um, and so teachers, we've done some work in our, um, LID days and our, um, Monday collaborations on how do we use those reports to design targeted interventions for student groups? Um, I have several teachers that are using their intervention time to differentiate. So they're using, like, they're students that are at grade level, they're giving them some work that is hitting the standards that were tripping them up on STAR and giving them some practice and some instruction on that. Whereas our student, the students that maybe were in the intensive category, they're getting something a little bit more targeted to what they're doing outside of their regular curriculum. So that's what we're working on right now is really differentiating our supports for ELL in each classroom. Um, and trying to move that yellow, the kids that are pooling in the yellow area, trying to move them towards, um, benchmark. So, and again, sixty-one percent had high or typical growth on STAR or reading. So there any questions about that?
You mentioned taking the test data and using it to improve.
Yes.
Just as a ballpark.
Yes.
Think, collate that data and then make it into something that's, that's planable.
Yes. So that is where AI has been actually really coming in handy for teachers. Um, so we realized we, STAR has a lot of deep reporting. You can go a lot of different ways. We realized through some conversations I had with a, another school that there's an instructional planning sheet. Well, I had seen that before and I thought it was for individual students or a whole class. Well, you can actually just say you have these five students that you're working with in your group. You can put those five students in and it will just tell you where their average area was and where they were getting tripped up. So teachers are using. Using that for their intervention time. Um, we have intervention times where kids will go to like their lap specialist or their. Enrichment specialist and they're using who's left in their class and they're, they're putting that information in and seeing, oh. Um, a lot of times it'll be like, okay, they, they still need third grade class, they still need a few first grade things, they're tripping them up. So then, um, one teacher today was showing me how she can just put those into an AI thing and it will create. Some problems that are really focused on those things. I, yeah, so. Yes, it could be very time consuming, but we do have some of these great technological advances that can really help. Teachers make some targeted supports for students, so.
Will the reports spit it out based on, can you do it backwards? You could do it by like low levels of, of achievement. Could you pull those names?
Um, yes, we can get a report that shows us who, who is what. Yeah, so teachers usually start with one that will show. Like you can do a growth report or just a status report and then they can look at group students that way. Um, usually they're not surprised. So they kind of already know these are the groups I'm working on and so just kind of fits with what they know, but it gives them another layer of like. Why did you, so the star is, um, it gets harder as you get them right. So sometimes if a kid has something missing in like a second grade skill, but they're a fourth grader. They might be able to do some fourth grade stuff. But they're getting stuck at this one spot, and so if we can just address that hole, then we might see a lot of growth. That, that's my. Suspicion. I'm really hoping that if we can target to what STAR is getting them stuck on, we can also see some more growth in those areas, plus. It will apply to what the students need, what they're showing they need, so, yeah.
It was pretty incredible. I was able to. Classroom today. Probably the teacher that you're referring to.
Yes, that's on them.
Report, she, some of her students had some, they were at a first grade level. And she was able to take the exact skills students need to prove on with just a prompt, hit enter and then. She had a whole customized uh, learning tool available for in ELA. So it's really, you gotta push us, you know, even beyond just intervention, but just in the district and we started having these conversations, just thinking about curriculum in general. Like, I don't necessarily need to have a curriculum, I mean, you need a curriculum, don't get me wrong, but.
Allison's like. Leave it to Whitney, no.
And I don't have to wait until I get to this particular point in the unit to meet a kid's needs, where back in the day, if I would have got that data, then I would have done. Hours of planning, hours of possible intervention to meet a variety of needs, where now I can put these skill sets. That, that this, you know, cluster of kiddos need, and then it literally was one minute.
Yeah, we were, we were in her classroom for less than ten minutes and she showed us how she, granted, she's done it before. So it wasn't a brand new thing to her, but yeah.
And she's using it, like you said, when other kids are out of the room especially.
Yes, for her intervention time. We don't use a to replace curriculum, I. I don't, I don't have the stamp of. But intervention, the most common need, and I think Alison would also attest to this, is when we do like PD surveys, if differentiation is a thing on there. It almost always is a hot topic for teachers. Differentiation is really challenging when it's one with twenty five, so that, that way to like. Have some supports on how do we make things really meaningful and where they're at when it's one of us with many. Um, and so there's another teacher, if you guys don't mind, if I have a little time, there's another teacher in fourth grade, um, she. Is, she's kind of discovered the AI thing and she just realized, you know, some of my students that are above benchmark. She's like, I don't get as much time with them, but man, they can teach themselves. So if I can print them something out that they need. Has a little bit of instructional material at the beginning, they can read that and say, oh, I get it, and then practice. And so she's been using that with some of her advanced students during their intervention time to like say, hey, I might not be able to pull you guys for a group. But this is something you're ready to learn, so try it out and see what you think. And she's had a lot of great success with that too, so.
Very cool.
Alright, well, that is my board report, so if you have no further questions.
Doctor Bergen.
Alright, so first off, uh, man, a lot of congratulations are earned. Uh, congratulations, congratulations, we had four, all of our four DI teams went to state, I think yours, son's one of them. So we had destination imagination this last week in Richland, the four teams that represented Quincy are all going to state, so that's really exciting. Uh, congratulations to the fourth graders and thank you so much to Quincy community for, we raised almost twenty five thousand dollars to send our students. Our fourth grade students to uh, overnight trip in Seattle, but that was really exciting. Um, on the same night of this Getty feed, we also had the opening play of the night, that wrapped up last weekend and. Um, it was amazing, uh, it was just absolutely astonishing. We had the, the leads were a freshman and sophomore. That was really fun to see, uh, that just the talent that Haley has available to her in the next years to come, so it was amazing. Um, again, nineteen people in the pit, uh, from all over the area coming to play at our high school. For our kiddos, uh, for free, just to play music. Uh, it was really cool and really inspiring, so just such a great night. Um, border treat, so we are working, we are gonna get a border treat. If you have any dates that you know you're just, you're gonna be gone for two weeks.
Um, June.
June, okay, I emailed them of those dates, um, so we can make sure that we don't include those in the survey to you guys. Um, conferences are coming, it's hard to believe, two weeks from now, student led conferences will be here. So students right now are working on uh, finishing up their goals, teachers are assessing and are, it'll be an opportunity for our students to share. Where they're at with their progress, uh, and their learning with their families. Um, it is also educational support professional week, so just thank you so much to all of our classified staff, they really are the heart and soul. Um, they are the first and last people our students often see, um, and I just cannot be more proud and more thankful of the amazing. Classified staff that we have, they work really, really hard. Um, and then lastly, congratulations to Allison Gately. Who in, yeah, nationally. Leader of the year, it's, it's incredible, uh, we've, we've, no stranger to having national recognized staff, Mike Wallace was a nationally recognized. She's our first nationally recognized um, educational leader, so she went to New Orleans and got called up on the big stage, um, so just congratulations. Allison and representing Quincy on that large of a stage, literally, so, way to go. So that is all I have.
Thank you, I'll save my beignet request for later. They're delicious, that's all you can do. Uh, student board report. Okay, so down, just down to the leadership report. So during the leadership meeting this week, um, we took some of what we heard last week about uh, policy thirty one. And uh, did have a, a talk with our um, legal representatives and, and talked about the ledge right now, the legislature has codified that. The rights of thirteen year olds, um, and we kind of feel like. We don't think that the pol, the policy is what it is, it's what the legislature's written, the procedure that we do, we can tailor more to what fits Quincy. And so we've asked him to work with the language and try to make it something that's more representative of our community and how we would like it to read. Um, and he will, uh, he will, will present that to us as a group and we'll, we'll share it again and have an opportunity to adopt it as a group. Um, uh, we had a little bit of a discussion about Title Nine, where we're at, where we're going. Um, everything's changed for this second, maybe third time in the last. Twelve calendar months, um, as the Trump administration has put out executive orders and, and rolled back some of the rulemaking that have been done under the previous administration. Um, we're kind of waiting for some legal battles to be fought in other places. Um, to kind of give us some, some bigger guidance, but for now, we're, we're kind of trying to stay the course with, with what we, we do in our district. Uh, and moving forward, we will um, hopefully have some guidance from some court cases that are processing through the federal level, so there'll be some clarification, but. He, he'll be available for more of that conversation as well, but those are our big takeaways from leadership. Thank you for everybody who provided reports tonight and Allison, again, congratulations, we had a great time. Uh, we have some policy review and adoption. These are second readings and adoptions.
Alright, so if you have questions on this. Nick, explain culturally responsive and why is that in there? I don't remember.
Yeah, so I think when we are, when a student does come to our office or the principal's office for discipline. I think thinking about their cultural background, um, before we do discipline or working with the child and it could be special education, it could be five oh four. Um, but the cultural piece, you know, some cultures don't look administrator in the eye. Um, some do, so just taking that into account when we are issuing, um, issuing discipline, it might not change. The, the discipline necessarily, um, even working with the parents and, and when the parents are there will come meet with us or, or. So just making sure that we're keeping that in mind, uh, when administering discipline.
Uh, but we're not talking like, oh my gosh, we're in the middle of a situation in a classroom and I have to tip toe, I'll be careful that. Cultural background.
No, no.
Not to say that we shouldn't take that into consideration, but.
No, it's, it's when I, when the, when the child gets sent to the office and we're having that conversation, correct. And you know, afterwards, working with the teacher, if there's a behavior plan, you know, thinking about some of those things in mind and getting the family on board, the behavior plan too.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, I think that was the only clarification, I know we discussed it last week, but.
Okay, there's no further questions then.
I, I, I do have questions.
Yes, please.
And I apologize if my uh, audio's spotty, I'm definitely not gonna turn my camera just cuz I don't trust my internet. Um, we're gonna. I have a few, so I'm, I'm just gonna take it line by line and we can start with just the policy and then go to the procedure.
Sure.
Okay, so, let me look at my notes. Um, for the procedure, I'm on page three at the very bottom, it notes the race and ethnicity student data task force. Um, it, it, are the practices that they're guiding us on, is that a WAC requirement?
Where are you at, Dana, on the procedure?
Procedure or policy?
No, policy, policy thirty two forty one, on page three at the very bottom, it notes that. We're gonna be following guidelines from the race and ethnicity, ethnicity student data task force, so I just wanna. See, is this required language from the WAC? Or RCW or wherever it's being referenced from.
You know, I would assume Dana, that is from a state group, um, our. State does look at our discipline data, but I don't have a good answer for you today on that.
The last line does say that this process may include review of data to prevent, address and address discrimination against students based on WAC. But it doesn't specifically mention.
Um, yeah, I'm just uncomfortable with the idea of following guidance. Required.
Deanna, I believe it is, I just, it is from the, it is an arm of the um, office, uh, OSPI.
But that doesn't, so, that, that doesn't still determine that it's required that we follow it. If, if it's not coming out of a WAC directly, then.
I would have to research the, the WAC on that. I would imagine, it's in the bottom, it does reference the RCW language and a WAC.
I, I think it's certain parts of it make sense cuz it, it does have that quoted, but I, I feel some hesitancy about following guidance from. A state's arm of the government versus that local control, so that, that was my biggest question, if you don't mind looking into that. I do really appreciate it. Um, now for the procedure, thirty two forty one P. Um, I have a lot more notes here, I just, I, I just didn't understand it, so it's more of compreh, me comprehending what you're trying to say by that. Um, let me follow this, so I'm on page six. Um, the paragraph that starts with unless the student's presence. And in that paragraph, it mentions the continuing threat of material and substantial disruption. And so this one was. Originally under classroom exclusion, so I'm not sure what category, oh yeah, it's still under classroom exclusions. Um, so I guess what is, what is this continuing threat of material and substantial disruption mean?
I, I think that's, do you want to take that, teacher? Sure, so if a student is talking back or if a student is tapping the pencil or being disrupted in that way, we would wanna try to redirect that student. As opposed to excluding them in the classroom, that would be trying the one, trying some kind of intervention first. If the student is throwing a chair at the teacher, then that student needs to be removed immediately. And really, what, and Deanna, what, what these changes did, they went into effect in around October. They gave more say back to the teachers about what they deem as substantial material either, so if. A, a teacher calls administrator that, you know, Billy needs to be removed or Billy's on his way down to the office, teachers get to have that say.
Yeah, I'm just.
Where I'm, I'm coming from, I think this is a good step, um, in OSPI, uh, looking at guidance that came from two thousand sixteen. That, you know, I questioned some of the effectiveness of it and I feel that they're making good steps. Um, of giving some control back to the classroom teacher and back to the building administrator.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm all for that. I, I think it's so more, it's also important, so when families. Try to understand why their child is being disciplined, that they understand why, um, and it can be justified and that's documented, but I'm just thinking. Like, does this also include like hallway, like, like, I, I. I myself experienced it, I know many people who have, where just being in the hallway lands you into the principal's office, but I wouldn't consider that a threat of material. A substantial disruption. Um, I did see somewhere down at the bottom where even just being asked to be removed from the area, so I'm just. This is very specific within the classroom and the teacher is sending you to the principal's office or sending you outside to say, I'm gonna. Uh, the hallway, this is what this is talking about, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The classroom exclusion, correct, specific to it.
Yeah.
Okay, and. And because later it's gonna have to be documented, so the teachers are then reporting. How they determine something to be that continued threat or that substantial disruption, right?
Correct, and they use our, we have a Swiss data system that they enter those, our online referrals onto.
Okay, okay, uh, the next section, I just had a question about the and the teacher, um. I just, I, I love the idea of definitely including the teacher, um, where it's a united decision, right, when it comes back to the student coming back into the classroom. This is a principal or does it mean working with a teacher, they, they came up with a plan together, they're both in agreement, correct, that's what that's saying?
Correct, yeah.
That's fantastic. Um. And then I got super confused in the next paragraph where it says a classroom exclusion does not include, um. I, I didn't get the does not include and then the following list, you know what I mean, like. That does not include, the part is where I got stuck, so that's, I, I didn't understand.
So are you, um, Dan, are you saying, so they struck out all that language, right?
Yeah.
And then it goes down to a teacher or school personnel, evidence-based classroom management practices, correct?
Mm-hmm, but yeah.
That's, I agree with that, uh, I question that too.
Yeah, so, what that means is, not everything necessarily is gonna be a classroom exclusion, you might, there might be a part of a behavior plan where they use. Um, you know, there's, there's actually classroom management practices outlined in that RCW. Uh, it could be going to a buddy teacher's classroom, it could be maybe, maybe a, a pass in their behavior plan where the. Child goes to the office for a quick break, but it's part of their behavior plan and parents agree to it, that might not count as a classroom exclusion. So what it does, it just gives more flexibility back to the schools. Instead of before, you had all that laundry list that the state was saying, these are the things, well now it really kind of comes down to. Um, what are those evidence-based classroom management practices that we can fall back to, it wouldn't necessarily be a exclusion, it's just an opportunity to help correct students' behavior.
Say exclusion.
It says.
And then it.
Classroom exclusion does not.
Not. This is the things that.
That result in misinstruction.
So you could misinstruction, but it's not necessarily because you're excluded or because, it could be just part of the behavior plan, maybe you, you are Mr. Medina's. Classroom PE helper, that helps just redirect, refocus the kid, and then they go back to class, but that's already part of the behavior plan, it's.
Then has Lee already missed some of the.
The, the has missed, but that's not considered an exclude, a disciplinary exclusion.
So would it maybe for clarity, just putting uh, like quotes around classroom exclusion or italicizing it, so they understand that's a section? Um, like it's actually a category, I mean to say. Like, does that make sense?
Yeah. That's the, that's what we're discussing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see you're saying it right off, that's.
Subject, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, um. And then I'm gonna continue on, sorry.
You're fine.
Now on page seven. The teacher principal or principal Disney, right there, it talks about the parent notification as soon as reasonably possible. Um, my question around that is, can we give it some parameters? I have heard from parents in the community where they find out in their opinion way too late, but their child's. Been in trouble, and so I'm like, is there a way to give it some sort of timeframe? I'm not sure, but I just want to kind of throw that out there to the board and see what their thoughts were. Page seven, the paragraph that says the teacher principal or the principal is using me right there.
You know, I I I think keeping it, our our administrators, we do try to let our families know usually before the end of the day. If not start of the day, the very next day, uh, we try to hold to a twenty-four hour rule. I think that reasonably possible gives administrators just a little bit of flexibility depending on. Maybe the volume of discipline that they've received that day, or even the situation that they might be investigating. My recommendation would be to keep the flexibility, um, because I can tell you that our, our principals, we do want to work very closely with our families. There is the occasion where it might go longer than twenty-four hours, um. But I would say that's the exception, not the norm.
I would agree with Deanna in that having some kind of something, I guess it depends on the severity, it's from a parental. Standpoint, if my kiddo comes home and says he got in trouble or or.
This is specific to classroom exclusion, so when.
Like if I hadn't been told or I hadn't been given a phone call. Within twenty-four hours, for sure, hopefully by the end of the day. If I'm having to hear from my student. And and the next thing I'm gonna do is call that principal and be like, what the heck?
I I would say that's the goal, but I I've just, I don't want necessarily lock our administrators into a twenty-four hour in procedure. Just because there are sometimes unforeseen circumstances that might do that.
Put a twenty-four hour notice requirement in here and then we're unable to contact a parent in twenty-four hours, then in future.
I also think though, that's almost a liability to the administrator for not doing it sooner, I don't know, I see both.
It all depends, but I I can, yeah, I don't, I don't, having been a principal, I didn't want it to hang out there.
I understand.
I'm just thinking like with Skyward, you know, immediately when your child is absent from a class, so. It it's happened, so can it just be designated that the student. Was expelled from that class, like somewhere within the Skyward system and tools that we already have.
Yeah, the classroom exclusions aren't recorded to Skyward, we don't want an exclusion being part of the student's discipline record.
That makes sense.
But I I would say that administering discipline is, it's very challenging. Uh, so I think if our our administrators can have that little bit of flexibility, knowing that we're gonna try to do in twenty-four hours.
Is there like something that's like tracking that, like for example? Some sort of like. Tool that does track how long it takes for an administrator to reach out or the designate me to reach out to the parents?
Uh, we, once, once it gets into Swiss, Dana, it does enter the time and date once it was entered into Swiss and usually mark parent contact on that. And then parent contact would happen before it was entered, all that, so the referrals are date timestamp, but not necessarily a. There's, yeah. There when, when they, you know, when they contacted families and. The action, and the action.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like if something happened second period. Um, and then the following day, end of day, that's when they were finally able to reach out to the parents and they haven't been able to return to the classroom, that's a really long time. But again, this is speaking of like.
That is worst case, that does not happen very often, if they're that long, they're generally out of school suspended. Or we, or we issue a, a, a in-school suspension, we convert it to an in-school suspension, because again, these classroom exclusions. Back in the day, they they had to be brief, uh, and because anything beyond ten minutes was considered, it could start the clock for an ISS. So really, but there are times when a child may need to be in the office for a couple of hours. And it was very common practice, a kid would come down with their rest of their their ELA assignment and they would work out of the office, so they work in my office and. Um, then they go back to class and we let the parent know that they were in here and then they go on their way.
Okay, um, now in regards to the informal grievance procedure, um. I know it kind of lists the process, but not really, is there like a form? Or is it just like an email, is this a phone call, a visit to the school, so how does a parent or guardian activate this informal grievance procedure?
Yeah, it's just that it could be a phone call, it could be a conversation when you're meeting with that principal. It does not have to be in writing, it could be in writing too, though.
But if there is suspension, um, issued Dana, all of the parents' rights are on the suspension paperwork that we give to our families.
And this, this is like before the actual suspension, so I'm assuming this informal grievance procedure is listed after classroom exclusions. Because it's in regards to the classroom. Uh, expulsion, you know what I mean, so.
What this is Dana, it's calling it out in procedure that the student was given an opportunity to explain their side of the story, that's really.
And this is a parent who didn't agree with their child being excluded from a class, and so.
This is before.
And we're student, it says.
Yeah, this is, this is. They, they can, um. Request a meeting with the principal. They have the right to that informal conference, where it says where this came from in the state where. You know, I'm not saying it was here, but it might have, I don't know, uh, where students were just suspended. Have a good day, you're gone, no, no conference with the parent, no conference with the student, they were just suspended. So some of the bad behavior that happened throughout the state, you know, winds its way here, and really it is, it's an opportunity for the parent and the student. To just to tell their side, and then if if the, you know, the principal, sometimes they will reduce, sometimes they'll remove. Sometimes the discipline stands, uh, and then that will trigger an additional grievance, uh, uh, appeal process.
Yeah, my recommendation maybe for the language here, for your consideration, is just to include language of how literally they can make an informal, like, is it a phone call? Do you prefer them to visit, and even just adding those options, it really helps people who aren't used to doing this. Kind of grievance situation, um, like just a clear understanding what they can do. So it just gives them guidance, is what I'm saying. Now I'm gonna keep going, um, page ten, number sixteen of a list. Of behavior that can result in in-school or short-term suspension, page ten, number sixteen. Um, that refusal to cease prohibited behavior, is that listed somewhere? Is that like maybe against the code of conduct of that school?
Or if I, it's defiance, if I've asked you, Dana, put your cell phone away, and you say, no way. I said, Dana, put your cell phone away, nope, not doing it, that's what that means.
Um, page thirteen, keeping this going, sorry, I just, I'm trying to understand. Number one, on page thirteen, under suspensions and expulsions notice category, number one, it just lists the word. And, and I'm like, wait, this is a procedure, so the description of the student's behavior and how the behavior violated this policy and procedure. Since this isn't a policy, wouldn't it just be violated this procedure?
Well, no, there's the discipline policy that we we need to reference to in in issuing discipline.
So maybe instead of this policy, it'd be policy.
And procedure.
Thirty-two forty-one and procedure, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I hear it.
Let's see, this is a very long thing to read, okay, so that's why there's a lot of questions.
That's, that also just illustrates the complexity of discipline that our administration is having to experience too. And we're in our family and our students, so, um, it's very complex. And then they have a, uh, eighty-page legal handbook that they also need to consult, um, to make sure that we're following the law. So soon discipline with all the appeal processes, it takes a considerable amount of our, our, our admin team's time. But I'm glad that OSPI is making changes because that's helping.
Definitely, um, on page seventeen, um. This is my first time seeing any kind of thing related to a, an appointed discipline appeal council. Do we have a discipline appeal council?
Yes, we do, we have a, a, a gentleman, um, who comes in, he's a independent, um, hearing officer. And if we have an appeal, they listen to the appeal, this year we have not had very many, I think, two appeals.
Well, it says it's supposed to be three persons appointed by the school board for fixed terms, I'm not familiar with who these three persons are.
Wait a second, I want to make sure this is around the the process. Sorry, this is when it goes to the board.
Yeah, paragraph.
So they've appealed with us, with us, Dana, and then after the hearing goes, it can go all the way to the board, a short term. Uh, can go all the way to the board, and in the past, we, this has only happened one time, it's generally, it's up to three people of the board, school board. But we we try to get everybody there.
Yeah, a- again, I, I don't know who the three persons are, um.
It'd be us, it's the school board.
Three, it'd be at least a quorum of the school board, so we could choose that, say the school board versus, but then it removes our ability to designate.
Well, it says it's for fixed terms, so I'm assuming they exist in action already, not that they're being used, but they're, they're already there. So my question is, if they're for a fixed term, who are they, when are these terms up?
You're elected for four years, so that's a fixed term.
It's made, just designate. And it's the score, maybe as good, appeal council, we do not have a discipline appeal council.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm confused. So then we would, yeah, you're right, you know, we would need to define what the fixed terms would be and everything if we stood up in a separate appeals council.
But we do not use a separate appeals council.
But we could.
We could.
That's like we were activated into a situation.
Right.
Then we would, three of us to do that. But it says appointed by the.
The board may also, so what we did, Deanna, the board may also designate a, the superintendent or a hearing officer to decide appeals. So if this does keep, having an appeals officer keeps the board out of it, because the board is the ultimate decider on a discipline. So we have, I don't do the hearing officer, I have a, I don't do the hearings, I have a hearing officer. So the hearing officer, the way we've run in the past, and it's, it's worked very clean and it doesn't happen very often. But the, the hearing officer hears the discipline, and then if the family would like to appeal the discipline from there. It goes then to the school board, and I think that separation from, because I bring in the hearing officer again, who's an independent hearing officer. It's not me, because sometimes I'm involved with administrators, so I think having an independent person is important. And then if they don't like the hearing officer's decision, then it can go to the school board for their, for the final hearing. And they can, and then, and then, and that's not, that doesn't take place in open board meeting, uh, you just need a quorum of the board. Uh, the one time we had it, it was three board members. Um, and we had it at a five o'clock board meeting, uh, or not board meeting, but it's a five o'clock discipline hearing. And again, in my whole time here as an assistant soup and then superintendent, this only happened one time.
Yeah, and that's good to know, uh, that background, and I guess the main reason I wanted to highlight that is just that is a responsibility of the board. And I didn't even know that there could be a designated board, um, and it does talk about some sort of fixed terms, which makes me assume that. It's a lot more formal than.
Yeah.
Something happens and then they're activated versus they know that they could be called upon if the need arises, but.
The way I read it is, we would appoint, we would choose the three people, tell them that they are appointed for the, this set number of dates. And that would be their term, and then once whatever they heard was over, they would be relieved of that duty. And then the next appeal would be directly to us, so.
And it doesn't have, we don't have. We don't have to have a standing committee there, it's.
Right.
Yeah. It's made designated.
Would this be easier to read in like a, like an ABC format or something?
Read it to me for a fourth grade level or something.
I think the way it's written as a paragraph makes it a little hard to digest.
And try real quick to your point, I don't think it's, um, an and where it's the, that review designated committee. And the school board, I think it's either or, so by the time it reaches that level, either we're gonna do it or we designated it to another group.
Yeah, right.
And and I would recommend again, having the board be the final say on that. And having the independent hearing officer hear that here at first, and then it goes to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, and that talks listed, which is totally fine, but I just, I guess even knowing that that could be an option was interesting to me. And that's it for my policy questions.
Yeah, Dana, I appreciate you.
Yeah, that's great.
I love it.
And.
So my guess is we are getting past this.
Well, we, the good news is we got time, it's, it's.
Yeah, I would say let's not pass it yet and.
So let's.
I I move the table, the policy and procedure adoptions for tonight until the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
I second.
All right, I'll in favor. So we'll move this policy and procedure to a future date after we have a chance to make some amendments to this and further discussion. Okay. Uh, unfinished business? I don't show any unfinished business on our agenda, any new business or requests for new business? Request for future topics? Well.
But I didn't understand the dates on it.
What's that?
Having trouble opening that attachment.
That's our, it's our list of all the things that we've.
Yeah, I understand what it is, I just couldn't get it. But, uh. It's got the dates now, like on the title X and. Or title, like, excuse me. That we have discussed this already.
Yeah, so tell them.
Really have that discussion, I thought we put it off, it was supposed to show up at our, be part of a.
That was when we drafted a letter to WI.
Yeah.
Whether more, if, if, was there more that you wanted to discuss about it?
I think it's, to be honest, I think it's in such flux right now, there's, there's no.
There's really nothing.
There's no. Clear definition of anything at the moment. So I, I think.
Let it sit for a little bit.
Yeah, let it marinate, so to speak, in the legal. But there was any, is there anything on here that we want to press?
Well, I thought we really wanted to do the parliamentary procedure.
Yeah.
That was supposed to, I thought we were supposed to have already done that.
So the FFA team bringing them in, they're preparing for state right now, so we're wanting to get them fully prepared and ready for state. And then we're thinking to be a re, a great work session after they finish their competition to come in, or it could be a good retreat topic, but yeah, they be, you know, Casey's talked to. To Mike about that, they're queued up to do that. I just haven't. Yeah, I just haven't, yeah, I just haven't put the, the, because we haven't closed that loop, so there's not a second take.
If there's no further business, I declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great.